I will open tonight's meeting, the meeting of Tuesday, July 14th, 2020, Town of Carlisle Board of Selectmen. And as always, I will read the agenda. And keeping in mind that sometimes we take agenda items out of order. At 7:00, we have community input. 7:05, the local emergency planning committee update. 7:15, board reorganization. 7:30, the town accountant. At 8 o'clock, approval of collective bargaining agreement with dispatchers union. 8:15, annual appointments. 8:30, town administrator's report. 8:45 liaison reports and 9 o'clock adjournment. And I won't be chairing the entire meeting, but we're going to try really hard to take the 7:30 agenda item at 7:30 because one of the people presenting is trying to be at two meetings at once. So I would like, as soon as we see her, to get her up and out. Great, community input. Normally, let's see, we ask people to raise their hands. And in order to do that, you go to your participant list at the bottom of your screen. Click on that. Right now, we have 12 participants. And at the bottom of that, it says invite, mute me and raise hand. If you were to click the raise hand, then you get a little hand in your window, lower hand, and I can recognize you for community input. I don't see anybody seeking community input tonight.
Nope.
All right, so we're going to move along to the LEPC update. And the chief has generously agreed to be here tonight. Thank you, chief, for joining us.
Oh, thanks for having me. So I think from an LEPC side, we're looking good. I know there are two cases added this week. So we've had 19 people in Carlisle assumed to be suffering from COVID-19. And the most recent two cases were folks in their mid-30s. From the 10,000-foot view, I think that things have clearly gone smoothly for the transition to town hall. I think the gatekeeper system is working out well, seems to be very well received. I think specifically town functions are going as they should and that people are able to do the business they need to do. Board of Health is very busy. Linda reported, George reported, planning's busy. I think folks have a lot of work, have plenty of things going on, but seem able to do things safely. I think the next big hurdle is the opening of school or what that's going to look like. So our folks from the school department have been doing a ton of work in planning and we're doing some work kind of behind the scenes to ensure that they have the supplies they need regardless of the plan that they have. But that's kind of the 10,000-foot view of what's going on with LEPC. Anything that I forgot? Tim, Kate, Barney, anybody else? It's Alan that's normally there?
I think the back-to-school task force has been increasingly meeting. And we got emails today from superintendent saying he wants to even increase those meetings because time is moving on. The directives from the state are a little bit nonspecific. And so there's a lot of work has to be done locally for that. So there are four subcommittees of the back-to-school task force that are active right now. And they're working very hard to have everything ready for school. By the way, the summer school has been going last week. And they're in their second week now, and that's been going very well by superintendent reports. So things are going well. But there's an awful lot of activity and a lot of work to do among that group.
And the other thing is, I just want to remind everybody that continue to wash your hands, continue to wear your masks because they're effective. We're very upset, not very upset, that's the wrong word to put it, but we're interested to see that the two latest cases are in younger people. And so we want to caution the younger people that they are not invincible. They can catch this, it can be painful for them. And then they, in turn, can unknowingly give it to other people that they love because before they even showed symptoms, they might be spreaders. So continue to wear your mask. Everybody should assume they have it and wear masks in public, please. Luke, you're the only one with kids at home. How are you surviving?
Other than boredom, we're just fine.
They're good. I want to see you produce those two kids though because I want to make sure they're still alive.
You want them to run in the background?
Adam Chairman, he's not the only one with kids at home.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, I'm sorry, David. That's right. I'm sorry.
I have a 12-year-old and a 15-year-old.
Okay.
I'm happy to report that the 15-year-old is a camp counselor at Summer Fun, which has been going very well. So the summer camp is running. And my son is active in soccer. His club soccer has resumed with, I think, non-contact soccer. So we're very happy to have some normalcy in the Modell household. Get him off the devices.
I think we also probably need to congratulate the LEPC and the Carlisle Neighborhood Group for being honored citizens this year. Both of those groups have worked incredibly hard over the last three months to well-deserved honor. So thank you so much.
At the risk of being self-congratulatory.
Yeah, well, we didn't do all that work. We just go to the meetings.
Yes, no, I mean Lori Eckler for sure and the COA, Angie. I'm not forgetting you, chief, but some of the members of the LEPC just did amazing, went well, over and above.
Please don't put me in the category with a Lori Eckler or an Angela. I cannot keep pace with either one, nor should I be mentioned in the same sentence. They were really exemplary. I'm proud of all of them. It was a really nice honor for those folks.
Christine Lehrer, I didn't want to forget her as well.
Holy cats.
Yep.
Yep. So, great.
One other bit of good news, just for general feeling good, is that Gleason announced, you know, Martha said that Gleason Library is going to have a modified opening at the end of the month. It's by appointment only, so they'll continue the curb side, but they're going to start the ability for people to come in and browse and use the computers by appointment. That's great news.
But we have to remain cautious and vigilant and wear the masks and wash the hands because we've done so well. It's so tempting to just kind of throw, you know, everything out the window, but this is the new normal.
Well, I think also people need to understand that the LEPC is really doing a wonderful job for the town. Things have been going well because the planning was done well. And we can thank the chief for that.
Yes, no question. And both chiefs, because I have to say, the other chief, Chief Saros, has definitely stepped up to the plate with the PPEs and being very generous and cooperative and helpful for the schools and all the other agencies to get the equipment that they needed that they were not having success getting access to. Good job all around.
Team effort, total team effort.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just want to also call out Tim in terms of getting everything worked out at town hall and having that all function smoothly.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Yep, I know you put a lot of work into that, too.
And he's a Zoom ma-
Yeah.
The Zoom master.
Zoom master, yeah.
Yes.
I think we'll have to have a hat made.
The recent made a position in town. Zoom master.
Well, you were a quick study and I learned a lot from you, too. So that's great. Get us up and running. All right, it's almost 7:00. It's a 7-Eleven. That's close enough to go forward for the board reorganization unless there's anybody actually in the audience who has any questions for the chief or anybody for the LEPC. No chat questions, no hands up. All right, this is going to be a very quiet meeting. Board reorganization. First of all, I want to welcome again David. Thank you for running and joining us. And every year, of course, at this time, we have our board reorganization. And I would like to open the meeting up to nominations for chair.
And no smirking, Nathan.
Look, Gary, just stay away. Good to see you. You look kind of relaxed, though.
Yeah, what's that big smile on his face?
Yeah.
Look at this.
Miss you all.
Well, we will miss you and your incisive questions for presenters. So I've opened this thing up. I'm not hearing it nothing. Crickets, that's what I'm hearing. Okay. I nominate, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to nominate Alan Lewis as the chair of, I don't know, I have the actual terminology here in front of me, but as the chair of the Board of Selectmen, soon to be called Select Board.
Is there a second to that motion? I second it. Okay. I beat you.
Technically, as chair, you can't second.
Okay, go ahead. Well, I'm waiting. I'm waiting. You know, I want to, I'm trying to get this stuff off my lap, so I'm anxious. Luke seconded that. Are there any other nominations? Anybody else volunteering for the job? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. And we usually go alphabetically, so it'll be Barney.
Arnold I.
Oscar Lilo I.
See, that is going to be David.
Oh, I guess.
Alan.
Louis abstaining.
Louis is abstaining? Oh, no, no, okay. Reed I. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody. And the gavel is now yours.
But first, we need to hear that the nomination has been accepted.
Oh.
The nomination is accepted.
All right, all right, Alan.
Great. Gavel's yours, Alan. You're the chair.
All right, well, I guess that's the way it works. All right, I have nominations for vice chair for the board.
I nominate Barney Arnold.
Do I hear a second? Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll declare nominations are closed. A roll call vote. Arnold?
Oh, Arnold I.
Oscar Lilo I.
Louis I.
Modell I.
Reed I.
Congratulations, Barney.
Thank you. I look forward to vicing with you, Alan.
Well, I've been good at vise, so. All right, nominations for clerk. Nominations are open.
Luke, you want to be clerk this year?
It doesn't matter. I can if you want.
David? David?
What does the clerk do?
Almost nothing, David.
Isn't that Jennifer's job?
No.
No, no, no.
Occasionally, you'll have to sign things.
Yeah, I asked the same question last year, David, when I got nominated. And it boiled down to if things need to be signed, you're the one that has to get yourself over to town hall.
I'm probably, I mean, everybody's close now, but in the long run, I'm probably closer than Luke. So I'm okay with it.
Okay. So do I hear a nomination?
I nominate David Modell for clerk.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll declare nominations are closed. Roll call vote.
Arnold I.
Oscar Lilo I.
Louis I.
Modell abstain.
Reed I.
David, congratulations. You are now the clerk of the Board of Selectmen, soon to be the select board. Very good. All righty. Thank you all. Moving on to item number three on the agenda, the town accountant report. I believe we have a motion.
I move-
Do we need Priscilla here for that?
She was planning on attending. You do have the motion in front of you.
I don't think it's necessary.
The year-end transfers. No, that's very true. If you're content with transfers, the finance committee voted on them last evening.
Wait a second. I guess I don't have that motion. Maybe I-
Is there just the one, the Board of Health?
I have the-
No, no.
That's not transfer.
There's two, yeah. There's the increase in the Board of Health revolving fund request that Kathy Galligan is going to make tonight. I expect her momentarily. Then there's a memo from Priscilla that was in the revised packet that Jennifer sent to you. Number of transfers to balance things at the end of the year.
So Barney, did you-
Motion you're looking for right now is the one about the Board of Health, right?
No, it's not because we're waiting for Kathy to come. She wants to be here at 7:30.
Okay, gotcha.
So what, do anybody download that? Because I didn't.
I downloaded the last one, but I didn't see it in there.
Yeah, it's not in the most recent packet.
No.
Okay, so that's why.
I think I can. Let me see if I can share that.
Share it on the screen.
Yeah, let me see if I can. There, I think this is it. See how that goes. All right.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve year-end transfers.
The bottom, Kate.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. There's a motion.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 33B, to approve year-end transfers between the various line items of the fiscal year 2020 budget as detailed above.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, are most of these pretty standard? I mean, I think, you know, snow and ice we've seen in the past.
Well, the 14/7 from the fraud audit is not usually standard.
Yeah, I was going to say, yes, some of these.
That was last year's special expense.
I think there was an additional vocational ed student. And so those costs were, the transfer was to be made at the end of the year for the cost of that additional student. So that's why the voc ed transfer is nearly $50,000.
Yeah, wow. Okay.
And is this the first year that the veterans has been fully funded here through this? I think it is.
It is. That's not the salary for the veterans agent, although those are veterans' benefits.
Okay.
So that's the overrun.
The benefits, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So it looks like it's about a wash, though, because you have 14 and 15, which is 65 to say, 105, 115. There's 200, close to 200,000 going out or going to these, cover these extra costs. But then we had a surplus of 83 and 77.
Those are the accounts where it's coming from, the two at the bottom, to those.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not clear, Tim, it's not clear from this little email, but that is-
Right, it doesn't, you probably should have started with the from to the, and then where it's going. But the two accounts at the bottom are what are funding the transfers.
So, Tim, can you give us kind of just 30 seconds on why group insurance and debt interest ran a surplus compared with budget?
Yeah, that's what I'm-
Well, historically, I wouldn't want to say it's over-budgeted, but it's kind of generously budgeted. The group insurance item is in case there are changes mid-year, particularly, you know, with the school department and other employees. So the appropriation is intentionally a bit higher than we anticipate in the event that there are changes during the year. And it does give a little flexibility at year's end to cover deficits in other accounts. And these deficits are more, and for more money than they usually are. This is, normally we'd do these at town meeting, but it was decided to do these at the end of the year between the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen at separate meetings. But it's not unusual that group insurance has a surplus at year's end.
What about interest, Tim?
I, that's usually budgeted pretty close to what's required during the year. I don't know if some debt might have been refinanced or for some reason, or perhaps pushed to, you know, next fiscal year.
I think this might have been some of the municipal stuff that didn't get, that was supposed to be bonded and then didn't get done, and so it didn't get bonded. Is that possibly it?
Yeah, that may be. Priscilla may join us.
Maybe the police station thing.
Oh, there's Priscilla. That's on now.
Oh, great.
I thought it was 7:30, sorry.
No, it's your fault. We got into it early. Sorry, Priscilla.
That's okay. Yeah, last year, when Bonnie was working on the budget for debt, she included some interest that the debt's not happening this year. So that's why we had that number.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
And, you know, it's all the items that I've been talking about most of the year. The fraud audit, the vocational education costs. That was one extra student that we didn't know about last year and some of the busing costs. Snow and ice, we always have to fill that. The veterans, we got a new veteran this year and now we don't have them. So this year, it won't go down, though, because of the cost of our agents. Blanket insurance, I put a little more than the negative that came up because sometimes Tim gets another bill or two after this point.
That's why it's a wrong number.
Yeah, and right, exactly. And state and county charges, that's what the state charges us monthly. And we just are told at the beginning, this will be it. And then by the end of the year, it's different, so.
And what are they charging us for? I mean, would they take with one hand and give with the other? It's kind of ridiculous to be charging us if they're giving us money. You know, why don't they just give us less and not charge us? I mean, this is, but anyway, never mind. It's not your fault. You don't make the rules.
I don't. I really don't.
Are there other questions for Priscilla?
Yes, I have a question, Prisc. So just explain to me, in the veterans, if someone's a veteran, they get benefits through the town?
Yes, yes. It's a state law and it's an income-based. And we have a veterans agent who figures out the numbers.
People apply for them.
Yep, and we don't usually have many, you know? But we did have two this past year.
And do we actually insure them or we just pay for whatever insurance they have?
We pay different, we pay them, what do they call it? It's a veterans benefit, so it's a number. And then sometimes we have to reimburse them their insurance or their prescriptions, that kind of-
Right, but we're paying, we're reimbursing, we're not covering. Like, they're not on our policy.
They're not on our policy, no. And what happens, David, is we pay it and in about a year, we get 75% back. So we do get some of it back, but it's a year delay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Arnold I.
Oscar Lilo I.
Louis I.
Modell I.
Reed I.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
The only other thing we did last night was there were no reserve fund, reserve fund transfers from the budget reserve, except for two. I talked to the finance committee last night, and this has been a very strange spring for bills, you know? Like Martha is still giving me bills that were February and March. It's like they're catching bills up right now. So I asked for $20,000 to be put into Tim's general expenses and $10,000 to be put in the police budget because one, Tim tends to get more of the bills. And a lot of the other budgets are really in good shape. You know, they have enough, if they get a bill, they have enough to encumber and we can pay it. Johns is a little tighter, so just to be more comfortable. And it was really for me. And they did approve that. And what happens is the budget reserve falls to free cash. So if we don't use this money, it falls to free cash. So it was just really because of this unknown time. And so that was done last night.
Well, Prisc, when do you normally close out? What's your closing window for fiscal '19, '20 bills to be recognized in fiscal '21?
The bills, I have to put, I have to know them as of tomorrow. And the only other way I can pay them is to encumber some money. You know, so if I find some-
You don't know it, but you know kind of how much, right?
Yeah, if somebody comes to me like next month and says, oops, I missed this one. As long as they have money in their FY '20 budget, we can encumber it and pay the bill.
But you have to encumber it by tomorrow or you encumber it a month from now?
No, I keep, the encumber list is pretty squishy for a little while.
Okay, but you know, I mean, again, forgive my naivete, it's been a while since I did this.
That's okay.
I mean, if that person came to you with that bill, would they have already given you a purchase order that would have given you evidence to encumber ahead of time?
David, we don't do purchase orders on the town side.
Okay, so you don't know. You may truly-
I may not know. And, you know, the departments are pretty good, but there's, like I said, I think this year with people not working at town hall all the time and, you know, all that, you know, other businesses not billing, you know, who knows what's out there? I just wanted to have a little safety net.
And what is that safety net, though?
Well, it's like I just said, I put, we put $20,000 from the budget reserve into Tim's general expenses.
Okay, so it's sort of a bucket of 20?
Yeah, yeah. And like I said, it will fall into free cash if we don't use it.
And the, I'm going to mute because I got crazy. Thank you.
So no actions required on that from us, is that right, Priscilla?
That is correct. I just wanted to tell you about the reserve, the transfer.
Let's move on to the Board of Health. I saw Kathy Galligan is on. Good evening, Kathy.
Hello, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm here to ask for an increase to the limit for our 53 and a half account. This is the account where we accumulate fees that are paid and then they are paid out to pay for services such as engineering or other services that are provided through the Board of Health. You may recall that in early June, Priscilla came and asked that we increase the annual cap from $60,000 to $70,000. This cap is something that's required in the Massachusetts state law. And if I understand correctly, it's to prevent abuse of this particular type of account. So if you go over your cap, both the FinCom and the Selectmen have to approve the overage. So back in the beginning of June, we made an estimate on how much we anticipated paying out from the account in fiscal year twenty. And at that time, town hall was just beginning to open up and group meetings weren't being allowed. We were still being very cautious. And we had a very large project, large, on the order of fifteen thousand dollars, that was being done at Benfield Farms. So Benfield Farms was paying into the fifty-three E account for engineering services that were to examine their failed septic system and come up with recommendations. And the engineering consultant, for the basis of his company's work, they had to come into the Board of Health office and go through the files and the history. And then they had to have onsite meetings in groups at Benfield Farms. So at the beginning of June, we predicted that this wouldn't happen in June, just based on where we were and what we were seeing. Well, as it turned out, things opened up more quickly than we expected. And the, the engineering firm was able to do quite a bit of their work, roughly at least two-thirds, if not the vast majority of their work in June. And so the projection that we had for spending of seventy thousand dollars turned out to be too low. So what we're asking for is a further increase to eighty thousand eight hundred dollars for services provided through June thirtieth, so the end of the fiscal year. And then as of June, July first, the cap resets. So we're just, we're really looking to pay off our fiscal year twenty bills. The, the fact that we've gone over, this is actually a good problem to have because the septic system at Benfield is in failure. And we're trying to get it, we're trying to get the recommendations in and make sure that the, the system can be, whatever needs to be done, we can figure out what the recommendations are and make sure that they're no longer polluting the land where the, the septic system is. So although, you know, we projected wrong at the beginning of June, we think that this is actually the better situation to be in. We went through this with the FinCom last night, they approved it. And so what I'm looking for here is to approve this one-time increase to eighty thousand eight hundred dollars.
And this is reimbursable, correct?
Absolutely, this is not a cost to the town.
Yep, gotcha. Thank you, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy? Okay, I should have done this at the beginning, but let me ask that we have, we have the motion, we should have had that before we discussed, but go ahead and if someone will move the motion?
Okay, I moved to increase the spending limit for the fiscal year twenty, Board of Health, Section fifty-three E and one-half revolving fund from seventy to eighty thousand eight hundred dollars for the Board of Health's request. That was seventy thousand to eighty thousand eight hundred for the Board of Health's request.
Thank you, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, I actually have a question. Rather than really even being reimbursable, don't they actually deposit the funds?
Yes.
In advance, so it's not even, you know, we have the funds in hand, so this is, this is really a housekeeping matter.
It's, it's no cost to the town.
Yeah, I just want to. We, we're not going to be stuck holding the bag if they didn't, for instance, I just want to also assure people that, you know, we already have this money in hand.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Well, question, well, well, well.
Go ahead.
Just again, forgive my ignorance here. So in the period where the money's there, but we haven't approved the revolvement, where is it set? How do you park that money when you get it if you don't have approval over seventy?
David, it's a fifty-three and a half account, it's a special revenue account.
Right.
The deposit has already gone in, the money's.
So you're allowed to, Chris, you're allowed to exceed your limit.
Yes, you can bring in money.
Just not spending, okay.
Only town meeting can, only town meeting sets it. And the only way we can change it during the year is both the finance committee and the selectmen agree that it can be changed.
To pull it out, but you can take the money up to any limit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll have a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, Lilo, I.
Louis, I.
Odell, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you very much, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
You can report back, you're in good shape.
Thank you, appreciate your color.
All right, on to agenda item number four. May I have a motion for the approval of the collective bargaining agreement with Local two oh one Alpha? Anybody need that motion read?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, sorry.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and just read it. Move to approve proposed changes to the current collective bargaining agreement with Local twenty A as present, is it twenty A or twenty, two oh one A?
Two oh one A.
Two oh one A, it's, yeah, it's okay, I amend that, two oh one A, as presented this evening by the town administrator to be consolidated into a new three-year agreement that will run from July one, twenty twenty through June thirty, twenty twenty-three. I have a second. Or actually, that's, somebody move it, I can't move it, somebody should move it.
Still moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion.
Tim, can you tell us a little bit about this? You, you were the one that worked it out with the dispatchers, right?
Well, I was part of the bargaining team and Kate and Ellen were, were part of it as well. Jim Dar from Finance Committee as well. And I know the chief's still on the call, in case there are any questions for him. I think the first year impact of the, the changes are about twenty-one thousand, is that correct, chief? Is he?
I'm just, sorry, I said unmute. I think it's actually closer to twenty-three, Tim.
Okay.
That's a net increase of twenty-three?
Right.
Including the two percent raise?
Correct. All, all expenses in the contract.
Right, I think that maybe the, the biggest change is the introduction of steps into the contract as we did with the police officers a few years ago. There's long been kind of a complaint that there's no differentiation between someone starting on the job and someone who's been there five years or ten years. So that, that's being introduced in this contract to, you know, show that we value longevity, particularly in communications. It's, it's a big asset to the town to develop a team and keep them in place. I think Kate and Ellen can speak to it as well, but very cordial, professional negotiations, you know, interrupted by the COVID. So we finished it up virtually, but they, they were a good group to work with and we certainly, you know, value and appreciate their service. And we think it's a fair agreement.
And I think that people should understand the, the, the steps really are there strategically timed so that when people may be thinking of leaving for another position, this encourages them to stay and helps keep turnover to a minimum.
So do they match the years in the police contract, years three, five, seven, and twelve? Is that?
I don't remember.
It's about that, but I'm not sure that's exactly the same.
Yeah, approximately, maybe not exact.
Yeah, I think it was actually a little longer.
The police?
No, on, on this communications contract, but I.
No, I just don't want it to be, you know, when, when this one comes up, all of a sudden they want another one added and another, you know, because that's when you start running into, you know, the back and forth piece and all of a sudden, everybody's getting steps every year and, you know.
No, no, they're absolutely not getting steps every year.
No, 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 I'm not, but, but it always starts somewhere, you know? And I'm not saying this is a bad thing, you know, it's just something, you know, these are one of the things that's lost between boards. You know, as people get on and people get off and, and new, new contracts are, are agreed to, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no.
That's why you guys need to run for reelection.
Yeah. I actually, I just had a couple of questions on a couple of the other things. Number six, so it, it's kind of wordy, but I, I think I get the premise of it. Basically, you know, we're going to give that extra thousand, right? Unless there's been some sort of adjustment to the, to the health premiums, basically throughout the town, I would think. Is this in anybody else's contract? Because I, I know.
It's in the police contract.
It is in the police contract?
Yep.
Okay.
Exact language, right.
Yeah, no, because just, this is another thing when we're, you know, we have a lot of non-union people who are, who are, you know, having a difficult time paying the health insurance, right? So, you know, it's a smaller number of people than the rest of the, the rest of the town hall employees. So again, just something we got to think about when, you know, when we agree to increase one groups, you know, we have to consider, you know, long-term if we're going to consider increasing other, other group. And then the last thing I had was number eleven, the received payment in lieu of personal time off for any unused days, does this include vacation time or is it strictly personal days? Like if the, I, I don't know, do they get two personal days a year?
So really, would you like me to answer that, Tim?
Sure, chief, yep.
So really, that's for vacation time? Keeping in mind that because there, there's basically exactly enough of them to cover the shifts. While we encourage people to take vacation time for mental health, it's a stressful job and, but if they choose to sell some back at the end of the year, we're paying it at a straight rate. Whereas if they took the time, we backfill it with overtime. And they asked for this, and I think it's a, it's a reasonable request. And at the end of the day, paying it could actually save money, if that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, no, I, no, I completely agree with that. It's just, yeah, it's the, the whole idea that, you know, kind of what you said early on, you know, you want people to take vacation for mental health reasons, you know? So I know, you know, in, in a couple of contracts, I think yours is like this, chief, and, and I think Tim's is the same where, you know, we'll, we'll buy back a week or two. You know, I just, I, I don't want people to not take vacation, you know, in lieu of a payment. I, I don't disagree with this, you know, in principle, but, but, you know, I just, I want to make sure, because it is, it's a high-stress job. So, yeah, you want to make sure that, that those folks are actually getting the time off that they, that they need and deserve, so. So I'm fine with it, I just, you know, I want to get that point out there.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote.
Sorry, you're very fast, Mr. Chairman.
Well.
I appreciate that. Okay, so I have a bunch of questions because I was not part of any of these negotiations, so. My first question is, who did the negotiation?
The negotiating, on our side or their side?
Our side, I don't, our side, yes.
It was Kate and I, Tim, the chief.
Okay, okay.
And Jim Dar.
And Jim Dar.
Okay, great. Second is, did you benchmark against other communications departments? How did you arrive at some of these or was it just a one-on-one negotiation with the, with the bargaining?
We had some information, some anecdotal information about where our pay scales are relative to others, but we didn't do a formal review.
How, how did you stack up in that?
We are, we are kind of in the middle.
Okay, all right, okay. Then as back to sort of Luke's question about, you know, comparing with other bargaining units in town. So I'll give you sort of my view, my step here. So the COLA seems in line with what we've negotiated with other units. The steps I'm, I'm hearing are comparable, if not exact, to the police. Longevity is a question, so tell me about longevity, what, how does that work?
Go ahead, chief.
And that, you know, a, a smart person would have had that, have brought this home, I'd have the folder right there. But the, in, in brief, the longevity is an encouragement to stay, obviously. And so that employees, we don't have revolving seats, folks coming through that and.
No, I, I understand, chief, I understand.
Why the significance of the bump up?
Well, what is it? Is it five hundred plus the two percent? What does it mean, what you said? It says accepts a counterproposal, five hundred increase to each longevity step. So it's a two percent plus five hundred, what, what is it?
No, no, okay, now, the longevity already, see, this is where I need the contract in front of me, kicks in and I can't remember the exact number of years where it kicks in. It's just those eligible for longevity get five hundred more. As, as a, three, three of them, I believe, are not eligible for any longevity. Prizzle, do you have the, the contract in front of you? Now, I could.
What's the, John, you don't have to get that detail, what's the theory? Like, what, at what age or what tenure do you, do you become eligible for longevity?
See, that's, that's where the, the hairs get split, it's north of three, I want to see it to the five or seven.
I think it's five-year increments, chief.
Five-year increments, thanks, Tim.
Yep.
I could open the contract on my computer, but I'd have to get rid of all your side.
Philosophy, because whatever we do, here's the thing, guys, okay? You know, Luke and Nathan and I negotiated the contract for the biggest bargaining unit in town and it was a pretty tough negotiation. And I can tell you that whatever goes on in the little, the little bargaining units, it's magnified up to the big bargaining units. So, you know, just want to understand this for the next time and pay attention to it. It's not, you know, I'm certainly not going to come in in the eleventh hour and object to it. I'm just trying to make sure that I understand how the thinking goes. So is this like, okay, so if you're in year five, you get a two percent step and then you get another five hundred bucks? What is it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Accrued leave, so what does number five mean? In this statement here? Both the town and the union agree in regards to awarding annual sick and personal leave. What do they agree to?
Is that the?
That's when, that's when, when the year starts.
We normally, so instead of, we, we front-load their vacation as opposed to them taking it.
Okay, okay, I see. Front-load, I got it, I got it, okay. And then Nate, Luke said he understood six, but I certainly don't. What, what is six in like plain English?
Six is simply an agreement that we had, we, we had this insurance committee which was dormant for a long, long time and nothing was being done about health insurance. And when we negotiated the police contract, we agreed that we would reconstitute that committee and, and look at the, the need to adjust the percentage that the town pays versus what the employee pays.
And is it consistent, this adjustment with what, say, police would pay or?
Yeah, identical in the two contracts.
Isn't it fifty-fifty anyway?
No, no, it doesn't say, it doesn't say what the percentage is, it says we're going to look at the percentage.
Currently, it's fifty-fifty and people have been saying that other towns have a much more favorable, like twenty-five, seventy-five. And so we said we would look at it.
So if it doesn't change.
Oh, two, twenty, twenty, so in twenty twenty-three, in twenty twenty-three, we're going to increase unless there's been, meaning it'll be more if there's an increase in.
If nothing's changed, they get that thousand dollar bonus at the end of the contract.
Or we, or we could make it fifty-one, forty-nine, they wouldn't get any, they would, all they, they would not get the thousand dollars.
But that would be less favorable to them, right?
That's correct, but that's all, that's all that we've agreed to.
Why would they agree to that?
Have to ask them. Because I think, well, the real, the real reason is, David, I think it was a good faith.
Yeah.
Effort and, and we said, look, we will seriously reconstitute this insurance committee. We understand that we are significantly different from some other towns in terms of the percentage of the health. We understand that we are significantly different from some other towns in terms of the percentage of the health we pay. And, and they took it on faith that we would do that and they agreed to it.
Okay, and, um, uh, in the 11, then, what John said, I was kind of, I lost track of what he was saying. We, we like the, we like people to take their vacation, it's a stressful job. But what, we recognize that they might want money instead of time off, is that what that's 11's really saying?
Yes.
At the end of the year, sometimes it just makes more sense to do that.
Yeah.
So.
That, that happens a lot, excuse me, that happens a lot when, uh, they're down a person and they just can't take the time off. That's when they.
Do we have a use it or lose it on vacation? You can't roll it? No, you, you can roll it, but keep in mind that that, that then is basically, uh, um, for lack of better words, an unfunded mandate for the next year. So if, if they rolled over, pick a number of days. I understand. I mean. Yet they have the ability to roll. Is, is vacation on a sliding scale, like for longevity, or is it a flat amount? A flat number of days? No, it's, it's sliding. In other words, you get more vacation with more longevity, like a company, or do you get a? Correct. I don't hear you, John, I don't know. That's correct.
Yes.
You're correct. And I can't remember the, uh, the exact number. In what, it's flat two weeks? Starts at two, but goes up from there.
After five years, it goes to three weeks and then I think, uh, four after 10, is that right, Prizzle? It's probably like that.
I knew I should have opened this contract. So do you, do you, do you, do you have a situ-, I mean, do we have any kind of policy in the town about rolling over and, um, maybe no more than 80 hours can be rolled over or 40 hours or something like that?
Two weeks, 70, yeah.
Prizzle, like, we couldn't hear you. Anniversary date, they can roll over, it's, it's set to roll over two weeks. Um, Tim, Tim has some discretion with that, with the personnel board. Um, if somebody's having a hard time using their vacation, like me, um, to, to take a little longer.
You get vacation days?
Yeah, I do.
Some years, not this one.
Liberal, liberal.
I mean, actually taking tomorrow off.
Just tomorrow, right, just tomorrow. Okay, so, so is, is this policy roughly consistent with the rest of the town employees? In other words, if, if any employee comes to Tim and says, I'm really swamped, you know, and I want to roll. And by the way, is rolling over, uh, December 31 or, uh, June, July 1?
It's everybody's anniversary date, so it's different for everyone.
Ah, we should change that, don't you think? That seems like a logistical nightmare.
Yep.
All right, my last question, my last question is, it says tentative agreement. Does that mean agreement or not agreement?
If, if we voted tonight, it's agreed.
Okay, in other words, they've agreed if we agree?
Correct.
Yeah, the, the, the union has voted to accept the agree, the tentative agreement was between the two bargaining teams. They took it back to the union, they voted to accept it. And now it's to the board to accept it or not.
All right. All right, no further questions, your honor.
Okay, roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, little I.
Louis, I.
Little I.
Reed, I.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Uh, Tim, you can tell them we have an agreement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
All right, moving on to, uh, item number five on the agenda, agenda, annual appointments. Uh. How would you like to do this?
Yeah, could we put the, uh, the, the list of them up on the, uh, on the screen, Tim? Can you share that?
Sure, sure, I can do that.
Um, I believe we still have some that have not, uh, completed their annual evaluations. And we had put them off to this week to try to get that done, I don't know what you want to do about that.
Well, let's hold off, uh, on, uh, the fire chief, because we're still in the evaluation for him. And I think we still have to meet with Tim.
Yeah, what's, I think, uh, we don't have to do this tonight, but I think in general, what we need to do is set a sched-, an annual calendar or schedule for evaluation so that we, you know, realize, so we step through each of these, so we get them done. We kind of got caught, um, with COVID, of course, again, uh, you know. I'm blaming everything on COVID this year, but, uh, uh, but it would be good that we, you know, identify the people that need. Or, well, everybody needs to have evaluation every year and we haven't been doing it. We've got to try to get up and running with that.
I agree, I agree completely, Kate, and is that a personnel board thing or a selectmen job?
Good question, I think, well, you know, it ultimately is, is our job because we're the ones that have to approve the reappointment of all these, um, positions. So some of them I think would be, um, evaluated by some other people, but then we should have, be assured that the evaluations has actually happened. Maybe we need to read those evaluations, um, before, you know, we go forward. Um, but, so I don't think we have to do all the evaluations, but we need to know that they have been done.
Right, I mean, generally, you're talking about two different things, right? So, you know, appointing people is kind of a binary thing, yes or no. But there's a salary setting, which I presume is governed by personnel board in some degree. And there's like a normal, you know, organization, you would put, put people accountable to the goals that were set for them or they themselves set for themselves, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, many of these people have, have multi-year contracts, yeah.
Well, yeah, right, I know, I understand that, but that doesn't mean that they shouldn't be held accountable to goals.
No, that's true, yeah.
And, and you don't want to let them.
Yeah.
Get to the end of the contract and say, well, we don't like the job you did, I mean, they have to know as they're going on. Um, so, um, now, I, you know, somebody like, let's say, the town clockkeeper, I don't think that's our job to evaluate. Uh, but we, we don't have, for that token, we don't really have a, an organizational chart.
Right.
Which, where you could refer to say, well, who, who is the guy that's supposed to evaluate that guy, you know?
Right, and we have, as been pointed out, you know, by Tim himself, we have a town administrator who is not a town manager, so there's a mi- minimal number of people who are direct reports to the town manager, uh, minister. Which means that the Board of Selectmen, as I understand it, has quite a few direct reports.
Yep.
Except that Tim is the head of personnel, so, you know, uh, we have to give them authority to do some of those, uh, evaluations so that they are reports. Um, or at least then in tandem, let, you know, with some, with another board or something like that.
Right, no, I, I, I completely agree, I mean, I, I'm going to ask John, I'm going to put Chief Fisher on the spot. My understanding, John, is you work for us, the Board of Selectmen, but yet, Tim is your HR administrator, is that the way you look at it, the same?
It is, and it's kind of the way I treat it. Um, I normally run things by Tim, in all honesty, and then, uh, the other folks that are here on the board can speak. When it, I always contact the chair when they're, um, set each year and let them know that I basically treat them like my boss, so I check in with them when I'm leaving town. Um, and ask their permission to leave town. If I'm leaving somebody else in charge, which normally happens about once a year, you know, somewhere around this time of the year. So it's, it's a, it's an odd thing. Um, if you were involved in some of the early, if you listened on some of the early discussions, um, in complete candor, um, I treat Tim like he is a town manager. Um, I do run a lot of stuff by him. Um, and if he says, no, it's not a good idea, I think I, I don't do it. Um, but I guess it doesn't have to be that way, that's just the way we treat it here.
Well, I, I think it is good practice, what you say, I, I just, I'd like to see a little, I mean, this is neither here nor there for just kind of me getting up to speed, but I think we should strive for a little more formality in terms of, I don't care, like if you say, you know, I need to take a week off, or should I, you know, issue AK-47s to my policeman? Yeah, Tim can wait, but I think in terms of setting goals for the year, that's a big deal for especially the high-profile positions. So I, yeah, I agree with Kate, I guess, I'd like to see a little more formality if it doesn't exist presently in terms of when we do it and then going back to those goals periodically as we, you know, I come from a school committee environment where that's a pretty formalistic process, right? The, the superintendent and the school committee work jointly to develop goals for the year and then the superintendent updates the committee on the goals and then the superintendent is evaluated on those goals, that's very formalistic. And maybe that's a little too much, but, you know, some degree of kind of written, to Kate's point, you know, some written documentation about what was expected and how the individual performed in those areas. Again, not the flag guy, but certainly the police chief, you know, that makes a lot of sense to me. Um, so a question for you, Mr. Chairman, is, would you entertain a something like an HR subcommittee out of the Board of Selectmen to kind of look at that whole process?
Yeah, I, not only would I was proposed, I was prepared to propose such a thing. At least to set, set up some kind of a policy. We, we know, we know we have to do it for regular evaluations and annual evaluations, both for us and also, uh, to give Tim some expectation of, of when we might want to see the ones that report to him.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
I will do that.
Okay, great, okay, thank you.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, and I think it's a more fair thing for our employees as well, because, because we do rotate through, uh, not to have kind of like your jerk, your chain jerked every time there's a new person on, that, well, gee, suddenly there's this new goal. Well, that's not, I was working on that goal, which was, you know, developed with this other committee and uh, we don't want to have people buffeted, uh, we want to, that, I think this would also help, uh, kind of even that out.
What I would suggest is that we, uh, divide this, uh, appointment, uh, procedure into two, one is the public officials and then the town boards and committees, we do separately. And I was, and suggest that, what I, I would ask that we have a motion to do the annual appointments with the exception of the town administrator and the fire chief with the expectation, we will have those evaluations done by our next meeting and we can point them at that time.
And, and Alan, who do you think, who will conduct those eval, evaluations?
Generally, uh, it will be the chair and the vice chair of the, of the board.
Okay.
But you've already started the process on the fire chief, right?
Yes, we have.
So will you continue that as, as you have?
Oh, we can, if Kate would agree.
I would agree to that, I think that again would be more fair to the, to the chief to not have a
We know what we've been through, right?
Cast change in the middle of the, the act, you know, the, the scene or whatever.
And Barney, you can, I can do Tim between now and our next meeting.
And it, you know, is there a, um, sort of agreed-upon, uh, procedure for doing that? Uh, cause this is my first time, you know, being involved in an evaluation, um, in the sense that, you know, getting self-evaluation from the individual and, you know, feedback from those that work for him or her and the, the board doing any kind of, um, you know, matrix. So how do you see that working?
Well, we don't, we, my understanding is there have been, there have been no written down, uh, year goals for this time. And so we'll have to play that by year, but I would certainly expect that, uh, we would do that as part of this evaluation and we would have set goals for next year.
So the goal setting for the next year is part of the evaluation?
Yeah, cause we could do that and, I mean, that's part of the negotiation with the, or the value, evaluation and negotiation with the individual.
So, um, Alan, do you, are you a proponent of, um, self-directed goals? In other words, you would have the individual come up with his or her own goals?
Certainly that would be part of it, yes.
Yeah, so my view is if you're starting, I mean, my understanding is that because you don't have a track record of the goals, at least in the last year, that the evaluation of the year that completed is kind of irrelevant because it was without goals. And furthermore, you know, not for nothing, but COVID sort of changed any goals that you would have had anyways.
Yeah.
That's true.
My, my, my advice is, my advice is ask the, the two individuals to self-report what they did do, just accomplishments, you know, and leave it open-ended and, and have a discussion with them about what they did well and what were the perceived shortcomings, you know, be sort of open about that and use that as a baseline to set up for, you know, meaningful goals for the coming year. I mean, I'm much more interested in establishing good goals for the coming year and, and holding people accountable to those.
David, that's exactly what we're doing with the fire chief.
Okay, good. Okay, so is that a, is that a private, I mean, have you created a subcommittee that's public or are you doing that in private? What's the mechanics of that?
It's essentially, essentially it was Kate and I and Tim.
Okay, but that, I don't know if a reporter is on, but that does create a subcommittee, so I am sensitive to OML, I mean, are you, is that, do we have a subcommittee that is sort of a personnel board effectively?
No.
Okay, that's a good answer, by the way. So, I mean, I, I think it sounds like it's ad hoc, like whichever individual happens to be, you pick a couple of members to do that then, right?
Yes.
Well, in this case, it was chair, vice chair and, and head of, uh, personnel. But Tim is head of personnel and that, in his, his role of as.
Well, I'm just, you know, from hard-fought experience, I'm just warning everyone that as you well know, I think, the, uh, you know, the attorney general's weighed in on specifically a concrete case. If you formalize individuals who don't change, in other words, you say chair and vice chair, you are creating a subcommittee and you are opening that particular discussion to OML.
All right.
Good information.
Yeah, that is good information, in this, I'm, I'm just saying, in this case, that's who it was.
I think you're better off just, Mr. Chairman, I think you're better off saying like, for this guy, we're going to do these two people and for that guy, we're going to do.
Got it.
All right.
Yeah, so just one other thing, um, with that is, you know, I, I always thought it made sense to have it be the liaison and, and the chair, I mean, the liaison is the individual that's working with, um, the board or committee or whoever, um, the chief, you know, throughout the year. Um, so they're really the ones that would check in annually or, uh, you know, not, not only annually, but, you know, on a weekly or a monthly basis. Um, you know, and can say, it just, you know, it can be a quick 10-minute check-in when you're talking about something else. Say you just wanted to check in on the goals and see, um, you know, the, it's, it, you know, I, I just think it makes more sense with, um, you know, the liaison who actually, uh, is, is, is more thoughtfully and thoroughly involved than, than just having the chair and vice chair. Um, you know, I mean, and a lot of these finance director, town accountant, uh, both the chiefs, I, you know, Tim can be chair and vice chair, right? Um, but a lot of these would fall into, you know, having a liaison, um, Gary, you know, um, you know, so I mean, when, when you have those one-on-one sessions on a semi-regular basis, um, you know, I just, I, I think it, it, it makes it, um, you know, you're a little more, um, boots on the ground as opposed to coming in at the end of the year, the beginning of the year, saying, hey, I think these should be your goals. Um, or, you know, um, or, you know, we didn't, we don't think you met any goals when, you know, all you're getting is a liaison report, um, you know, every few meetings, so.
Well, so when, so on Luke, on that, you know, on that note, I mean, it's an interesting question. If there's no, if there's no track record of goal-setting, at least short-term, it, it, the simpler thing is just simply accept everyone, reappoint them all.
Yep.
I don't know when we're doing our liaison, but I don't think it's tonight, right?
No.
And, you know, you're quite right, I mean, let the liaison's assignments be set and make agenda one for the liaisons to sit with the individuals and Tim, if he's involved, and do goal-setting and report back. You know, you don't need, I mean, we don't, we can separate the, in a normal process, you would do the two together, right? You would say, okay, let's do a performance review, how did you do on what we talked about a year ago? You know, are we going forward with you, you know, okay, fine. But we're not there, it's kind of like irrelevant, right? We're not going to not reappoint Chief Fisher or Tim, so.
Right.
Or Brian, I don't know, but I, you know, I just, I think it doesn't really have any meaning at this point, so I kind of like what you're saying, which is let's get it started right, you know, whatever happened, happened, we're done with that. Let's get the assignments, let's get the liaisons and let's make job one for the liaisons to work out the goals and report them. I mean, part of the liaison job is, you know, now you have the responsibility of. now you have the responsibility of reporting out on a regular basis what's going on, right?
Exactly, and, and part of it too is, you know, if anybody has any question throughout the year, you know, and I, you know, I think just over my time on the board liaison reports of, because they're at the end of the agenda, everybody just wants to get out. You know, sometimes they've been kind of quick, you know, and, and sometimes important things get missed. So, you know, I, I think we should put it as a more regular thing on the agenda and if anybody has questions about, say, what's going on at the police department, you know, make sure that the liaison is prepared with a liaison report for what's going on, you know, just to keep everybody in the loop.
Okay.
No, one other thought on this too, when we talk about goal-setting, you know, they're not, they're not the same, but they do, you know, connect, which is the goals of the Board of Selectmen. And it seems to me you need to have that part of it also informing the goals that a particular, you know, individual on these public, you know, the, the higher-profile public official roles, that they're, that that's in the context of those. Their goals are in the context of the overall goals. And again, they're not the same, there may be some separate goals, but.
No, but you're, you're absolutely right.
Right, they need to be viewed in that context. So, I mean, that's another conversation that it would be good for us to have about setting goals for the Board of Selectmen, you know, going forward.
So what's the, I mean, that, you know, that brings up another excellent point, which is, as we look forward in the calendar, when are we doing liaison assignments? And then we, we've all talked individually and I want to talk about it tonight is kind of a goal-setting meeting, you know, Board of Selectmen goal-setting meeting that would occur in August, I presume. So when is liaison assignments on the calendar?
Not yet.
Is that not yet, like next meeting or months from now? Or what, what's the?
It couldn't be next meeting if you'd like it. We'll put it on the agenda for next meeting, yeah.
Well, Barney's, Barney's and maybe none, you know, it's a question if Barney's not able to participate. But, I mean, maybe it should be. I, I, I agree with Barney. I think that's probably, you know, the proper procedure is flow-down. So, you know, as a committee, I guess we have to decide what is the timetable. I mean, the, the fiscal year is already, we're already 15 days into the fiscal year and we'll probably end up being, you know, 60 days into the fiscal year by the time we work this process out. So we want to get on with it pretty, you know, pretty expeditiously. But I think Barney's correct that we should be self-aligned as to our goals and make sure that those are reflected in the high-profile jobs.
Yeah. Well, the liaison, the assignment of liaisons is done generally as a, you know, who wants this committee, who wants that committee? And that can be done in relatively short order in the next meeting. I can put that on next, the next meeting's agenda.
That's fine. Barney, are you going to be able to participate from the woods?
Yeah, I should be able to.
Stick your leg out and your arm out and.
If not, she gets all the lousy assignments.
If not, you can just send a list of what you, who you want to be liaison to.
I was going to say that where we go the other way and I get all my first choices, I just send it to Alan ahead of time.
Oh, there you go. Barney, dog control officer and keeper of the town flag.
Wait, wait, what about the, the fence inspector? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, we just got away from here a little bit.
I would support, I don't want to drag it on, I support that.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the fiscal 2021 list of public officials dated 6/23/2020 with the exception of the fire chief. And do we want to accept, what did we decide about Tim in this whole discussion?
Yeah, let's go, let's go ahead and appoint him.
Okay, that's so. Period, full stop.
Yep. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
All right, so, so what's the thinking about not approving Brian?
Yeah.
He's, he's in the process of evaluation.
He's in the middle of one, yeah.
Yes, and he is also on a probation, not probationary, but he was on a, you know, one-year contract. So he's sort of in a different class because he's not in the middle of a contract. Tim, for instance, and, and the chief are both in the middle of contracts, so, so he actually, it's a little different situation.
It just, it seems like we're singling Brian out. And I mean, I understand, you know.
That's why I didn't do any of it last week because I didn't want to single him out.
Yeah.
We had hoped to have that done by tonight, but we did not. We did not get it done tonight. There was an issue, yeah. Okay, I have a motion.
Well, I made the motion. We don't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, if, if we don't do this tonight, everybody's still going to continue to work and everybody's still.
That's correct.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, yeah, I, I think we should hold off. It just, you know, I just, it seems like we're singling him out. And again, I understand where you're coming from, but, um, yeah, and also too, you know, like.
I would accept a motion to table to a time certain.
So move.
Time certain being the next meeting.
Yeah, do you want, yeah, do you want to do the next meeting?
Yes.
Sounds reasonable.
We have a motion to table.
Yeah, so we're going to hold off on all of these. Motion is to table all of them, okay.
Yes.
Luke?
We're going to be better, Alan, it's better to withdraw the motion that's on.
Yeah, yeah.
I withdraw the motion.
I think the mover, the mover should withdraw the motion, yeah.
All right.
I would, I would withdraw the motion.
Does a second agree?
I agree.
I don't think it was, oh, did you second?
Okay, the motion is withdrawn. Town boards and committees.
So I had a little question about that because we got a letter about, what was it, the cultural council last time? Because I had had a list of everybody and we had gone through, you know, committee after committee. And for some reason, the new members for that were not listed. So are we just going to kind of do this as a big slate? Or are we going to just go over the ones that we didn't do last time?
Well, many of them, there are nobody expiring this year. And so we can do those. All the ones with, with only people who are, who have another year to run, we can do.
Okay, and then there's the, what about the dear committee?
Yeah, it would, it would be good to, as, as the liaison to the dear committee, I can say that it would be good to approve the current members. If you flip down, if you get down to that, let's see, there it is. So to approve Alex, Todd, Jonathan, myself and John Keating, who are the current members, we, we're not ready. We, we need to review, I know that you have a letter in the packet from George Mahalik, but we're not ready to, he hasn't come before the dear committee for a discussion first. And there's also Stephen Keeler. So if we could appoint those five tonight, then the dear committee can meet, officially meet and review those new appointments and then request those be approved by the board at a future meeting.
All right, let me suggest this. We go down the list. I'll, I'll list them by title and if there's nobody who expires in 2020, we'll agree to vote on those tonight. And the ones where there is somebody who, where there's, there are expirations which occur, we'll hold those off for the moment and we can do, deal with them separately. So I will try, I think we should have a single motion for the ones that we're going to name now, which has only people who have a continuing appointment. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, so the Affordable Housing Trust, actually there's, it's going to be a change there because the chair of the, I'm on that currently and the chair does not serve on that committee. So that would be, what could be Kate goes on there.
And Nathan is also no longer on the board and he was a member. Remember, it's four of the five.
Right.
Yep, he's not listed.
So David Modell would be added to that as well.
So, all right, I will, I move that Luca Scalelo, Kate Reed, Barney Arnold, David Modell, Maureen Cosgrove-Derry and George Payne.
Okay.
Two are new and the other are, are appointed.
Correct.
You know what, we haven't talked to George. We don't know if he wants to be back on or Maureen. I think because the Affordable Housing hasn't met. So I think that one has to be held off.
Yep, okay. Agricultural Commission has nobody expiring. So we'll, we'll, we'll vote on that one tonight.
I think the ones that are highlighted.
The Audit Committee has nobody expiring. We can vote on that tonight. Board of Registars has nobody retiring. We can vote on that tonight. Celebrations Committee has nobody retiring, so we can vote on that tonight. Community Preservation Commission has nobody expiring. We can vote on that tonight. Conservation Commission has no one expiring. We can vote on that tonight. Conservation Restriction Advisory Committee has no one expiring. We can vote on that tonight. Council on Aging has nobody expiring. We can vote on that tonight.
It's really only the bolded names are the ones with the expiring terms and what their new term would be.
Yeah, but he's in yellow.
We're really just, we're just appointing the new people. We're not really reappointing the people that are not expiring. So I move that we appoint Alan Bojarski, Jill Henderson, Dan Lennon, Gene Albanese and Karen Kligger to the Cultural Council for three-year terms to go for 2023.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
I vote, I, I move that we.
Aren't you going to just do it all in bulk?
The bulk, yeah, but I have to do the individual, the individual members still.
Yeah, I guess we don't have to appoint people who, who aren't expiring.
Right, so I, I move that we appoint Alex Para, Todd Thorson, Jonathan DeCock, Barney Arnold and John Keating to the dear committee for a term of one year expiring 2021. I move that we appoint that Robert Zog, Jonathan DeCock and Lana Tomorrow be appointed to the Energy Task Force for one, period of one year, ending in 20, June 30th, 2021. Finance Committee appoint Scott Triola, Victor Liang and Melissa McMorro for three-year terms to expire June 30th, 2023. Household Recycling Committee, Rob Perry, for a three-year term to expire 20, June 30th, 2023. Long-term cap, we don't know yet. Municipal Facilities, not bolded, nobody bolded. I guess we did, because we did that last time. Recreation Committee, Amy Smack, for a period of three years to end of June 30th, 2023. The Scholarship Advisory Committee, Diane Powers, for a period of one year expiring June 30th, 2021. And the Senior Tax Advisory Committee for period, terms of one year expiring June 30th, 2021. The Kimberly Kane, Melissa Stamp, Angela Smith, Joan Ingersoll, Walter Hickman and Barbara Culkins. The Traffic Safety Advisory Committee for a period of one year to expire June 30th, 2021. Tim Goddard, Luca Scalelo, Gary Davis, John Fisher, Bert Rubenstein and Lee Storrs. Trails Committee, a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2023. Robert Roy Harold. Veterans Committee, period for one year expiring June 30th, 2021. Timothy Nickerson, Greg Fairbank, Christopher Eisenbees. Youth Commission for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2023. Lori Cameron Eckler. Zoning Board of Appeals, three-year term expiring June 30th, 2023. Travis Snell, Emmanuel Crespo, Eric Adams, Gretchen Andereg and Lisa Davis Lewis.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote.
Last one, are Gretchen and Lisa actually getting a one-year assignment? What's going on with that?
Right.
Oh, sorry, because they're associate members. Sorry, you're right. Let me amend that then. Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023. Travis Snell and Emmanuel Crespo and Eric Adams. And for a one-year term, Gretchen Andereg and Lisa Davis Lewis.
Eric's listed as associate in my list.
He is listed as associate on mine too, but for some reason it does say 2023.
Yeah. We'll need to check on that, yeah. Okay, roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Luca Scalelo, aye.
Louis, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Thank you.
Aye, more, more Reed, aye, yai, 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 yai.
Well done, Kate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, we are up to the.
Town Administrator's Report.
What happened to my agenda? I have an agenda here somewhere. Here it is. Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, the first item in my report, the Caroline Hill Scholarship Committee has made their recommendations for the 2020-2021 academic year. And you'll see the memo from the committee with their recommended dispersals from the Caroline Hill Fund totaling $10,000 for next year. And we have a motion for you on that as well.
I move that the board approve the award of $10,000 in scholarships from the Caroline Hill Scholarship Fund for the 2021 academic year to be dispersed as recommended by the Carolyn Hill Scholarship Committee. And with the patience and acceptance of the board, I would like to read the recipients and their awards from the list.
Do, do, do they know that they've gotten it yet? Because a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago, they, they didn't know that they had gotten it. The letter hadn't come before. We blurted it out. The reason I know is, well, maybe it was maybe four years ago. It was when I was first on, because one of my, one of my neighbors, I congratulated her and, yeah, they hadn't been notified yet, so.
Yeah, well, in that case, let's not read them tonight.
Yeah.
So we don't embarrass anybody. It's not key, it's not key to the motion.
Yeah.
All right, fine.
But it's a good idea to recognize them.
I was trying to recognize them.
Oh, no, without a doubt. I think, I think we should do that. But yeah, just make sure they get the letter.
Yeah.
Okay.
So did you get a second?
Not yet.
Yes.
Oh, no, okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Okay, we have motion as made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Luca Scalelo, aye.
Louis, aye.
Reed, aye. Oh, sorry.
David, are you there?
Sorry, Modell, aye.
Okay. Kate?
Reed, aye.
Motion carries. I have a motion for item two.
This is on the request of the, the India Association of Greater Boston for a flag raising ceremony on August 15th. They had contacted Kate, I believe, by email and.
Yeah.
Chief Fisher, who's offered the assistance of the Carlisle Police as well. We have a suggested motion for you.
I move that the board approve the use of the town common and flagpole on Saturday, August 15th, 2020, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM by the India Association of Greater Boston to observe Indian Independence Day, provided that they also obtain the permission of the First Religious Society and coordinate with the Carlisle Police Department.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Luca Scalelo, aye.
Louis, aye.
Modell, aye.
Reed, aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, and then you'll see for the schedule for our meeting on the 28th, we've got a whole location hearing with EverSource Church Street, connection with the solar project. We're hoping to have a recap of the town meeting with the moderator, discuss what went well and what we think could be improved upon for the next town meeting. Hoping to have a discussion of merging, uh, the town and school, uh, facility, facilities and procurement functions. This is something that I've been discussing with Superintendent O'Shea and, and their facilities, Guy and ours. And, uh, we hope to, to bring that to you, uh, in two weeks. Also, I'm gonna add an item, uh, to, uh, to the, we'll set the liaison, uh, assignments, uh, for the year and do the, uh, public official, uh, appointments. And I think for the August eleventh meeting, I, I can set that as the board's first meeting to consider, uh, goals for fiscal twenty-one, if you'd like. Okay, I'll start that there.
Tim, you're talking about the goals for the Board of Selectmen for the year?
Yes, yes.
Um, you know, I wonder if we might want to think about a separate meeting from a regular BOS agenda and, and have a, have it be more of a, kind of a brainstorming session with the idea that, you know, you kick around a bunch of ideas, you start to zero in on what you think my, some priorities might be, but then you take some, you know, a couple of weeks, and then you come back and approve a set of goals. Um, but that, rather than trying to do it as part of our, a standing meeting, um, we do, we do it at a separate time in August. That, um, and I know, David, you have some thoughts about this too, about how to, how to do that meeting.
Right, um, well, I think it's, I, yeah, thank you. I think there's a, you know, several points here. One is, I, I have taken the opportunity as a new member to, um, have one-on-one discussions with each selectman, select person, board of, board member, I'd say, and, um, also with Tim, and my sense is that there's a good time right now to take a fairly bold, uh, take some bold initiatives, uh, with regard to goal setting. Um, and I'm very much a proponent of a strong goal setting and a strong follow-up, you know, kind of procedure with boards. Um, so I agree with, I agree with Barney that, uh, it's always best if you have the goal-setting meeting be kind of stripped away from the day-to-day stuff that takes a lot of time and that we really spend a couple hours focusing. Um, if it is to be a bold agenda, then also, well, actually, any agenda, I would say. There's a, there's a meeting that one, you know, brainstorms, as Barney said. And then there's a follow-up where really there's a refinement as to what are we actually going to do. Um, so that, that's kind of a couplet of meetings. And then if you have two regular meetings at the same time, now you've got a meeting a week. Now, it might be okay, you know, because, I mean, Zoom meetings are a little easier. But we, we would need to commit to four meetings, or maybe we have to repurpose one of the regular meetings. I imagine in other years, we didn't have a meeting every two weeks during August. Is that true or not?
That's correct.
Yeah, so maybe it's three meetings. Um, so I, that's one thing. And then the second thing is that, I've expressed this to a couple of people. You know, I'm kind of a traditionalist in terms of really wanting face-to-face contact and a, a, a time to meet face-to-face. So if it's possible, and I don't know if it's possible, uh, but I think Tim said that there's no sort of statutory reason why we couldn't do it. I would love to have the, the strategy meeting, the brainstorming meeting, be an in-person meeting in the Clark Room. Uh, it's, of course, got to comply with open meeting law, so if lots of people show up, we have to figure that out. But my guess is that it won't be lots of people. And, um, and, and I like coupling those with food. That's always worked very well for us in the school committee, where we, we bring dinner, we either do potluck, or if we're worried about uh, commingling of things, then we can do, uh, you know, something else where we get some food brought in. But, um, have a dinner kind of meeting and sit down and spend a couple hours with a meal and really talk openly about, you know, where we want to go this year with all the challenges. So, um, if the calendar is that we have an eight-eleven goals meeting and an eight, I mean, I'm sorry, well, I don't know. If we have an eight-eleven goals meeting, and then maybe we gotta stick a meeting in the middle there between eight-eleven and eight-twenty-five to do a regular meeting, and then eight-twenty-five, we sort of follow up. I mean, we have to get on with it, because then town meeting's gonna take over our, our airspace for a while. So I'm not sure, you know, I'm throwing it open for debate, but I would be a proponent of that.
Yeah, we also have a, uh, I'd like to, somewhere, whether it could even be the twenty-eighth, uh, Tim, to talk about IT.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, I want to mention two other things for agenda items, but maybe we could just, um, kind of work through what we think about the goal-setting. Um, Alan, do you have any thoughts about what you'd like to, you know, see happen?
No, I mean, I think, I think it's, uh, it's probably worth a meeting by itself. Uh, it's something we haven't really spent a lot of time on, at least in the two years I've been on the board. Uh, but, uh, it probably is worthwhile doing. Uh, and, uh, you know, if, what we, I don't know what we will get done this year with budget issues coming up. I'm, I think, I, I think August and September, we're gonna spend a lot of time dealing with budget. Uh, and so we need to make time for that as well. But, uh, I think, uh, at least, uh, you know, and again, we can, if, if there are urgent things that have to be done, we can always append them to the, even to the, uh, planning meeting without any difficulty. Uh, but, uh, certainly, I think it's, it is worth giving it a shot anyway to see if we can do a, 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 a planning meeting. Uh, and if it's, if it's gonna be done in person, I don't know how many, you know, how many people with a Clark Room can handle, uh, if we have a, any kind of a turnout from the public. Uh, but if we're gonna have, uh, social distancing, uh, which we're gonna have to have, uh, um, well, we can see, but, uh, we may have to do that remotely.
I wonder if we could do it in the school cafeteria? I mean, if.
That's liable to be a mess. Uh, just because they're really getting ready to, for school opening.
Yeah.
Uh, and there's a lot of furniture things going on, and a lot of things are in transit over there.
Yeah, unfortunately, the drills aren't very big spaces, and our table, um, is not conducive, I mean, is not conducive.
Well, we're only five, plus Tim is six, so I think, you know, you can put like three in the table. I, I think it's worth trying, I really do. I think that, you know, we haven't met face-to-face. You guys haven't met face-to-face in quite a while, and, um.
March test.
You know, it's gonna add to the richness of the dialogue.
I agree, I, I agree.
We can try it.
Um, so, I'm looking at August and thinking, maybe instead of trying to take one of our regular Board of Selectmen meet nights, the eleventh or the twenty-fifth, instead we pick a date that that's, that's that first week of August for a planning discussion, and then leave those other two open as regular Board of Selectmen.
What do people's calendars look like? Are you gonna be around?
Yes.
I'm always around, yeah.
I'm always around.
I'm either here or I'm there, but I'm around, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I should be around. My travels dependent on clinical sites opening up, and most of them are closing up again, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm grounded, yeah.
Yeah, we're just as well. You don't want to be in a plane anyway.
No.
At this point.
Why don't we try for Tuesday, August fourth?
Yeah.
And we're thinking earlier then, in the evenings, so that, um, we would have, like, food?
I propose six o'clock with food. We can work out those details.
Food could be tricky, uh.
Well, we can, we can bring sandwiches, you know, Panera, I mean, if we want, we can order sandwiches, separate lunches. I, it's just, you know, Alan, there's like 10,000 years of history of humans kind of getting together over a meal, right? It just makes it.
We, in, in, in another.
Whatever's your pleasure.
We used to be able to have retreats. I mean, when I was on school committee, we had yearly retreats, and we went to the Colonial Inn and, you know, uh.
Boosted up.
Well, no, but it was, there was, it was, you know.
Yeah, now I get you.
Important work.
Yeah.
It was important work. I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to report, Kate, that no adult beverages will be allowed in the Clark Room.
That's too bad, because I would have brought the wine.
That would have helped, yeah.
All right, so, um, just to move us along, we're saying six PM on August fourth. Does that work for everybody? Tim, are you good with that?
Sure, yep, that's fine.
Okay. Um. All right.
Okay, so, B O S at six PM. I'm putting in my calendar now, guys.
Good.
Add location, this would be Clark with food.
Right.
Okay.
And then, um, just going back to, um, topics for future, uh, Board of Selectmen meetings, um, I'd really like to see us, uh, vote up or down on the bow hunt at the next meeting. Just because to get that resolved and, uh, figure out what's happening this year.
What's the, but Barney, what's the downside of punting on that? I mean, what if you don't take it up? What happens?
Well, at a certain point, uh, it becomes difficult, the timing, it's so late in the summer, you know, that it's difficult to go through the process of, um, checking with all the hunters about who wants to, you know, hunt in, in this, um, on our town to parcels, and then to issue them permits, to go through that process.
So, you know, we're, we're talking about big picture things here, right? We got COVID nineteen, we got budget pressures, we're talking about possible, you know, reorganization issues at the town level. Uh, we've got a bunch of people retiring, we gotta figure out succession planning. I mean, these are big issues that affect, you know, all the taxpayers in the town. Bow hunting, I realize, has a very strong emotional component, both pro and con, among the people that, you know, show up, and they do show up, and they argue for a long time. I just question, in the context of its strategic importance, whether it's honestly worth our time and energy right now. I'm not taking a position, I'm just saying, it's a small amount of people that are very, very passionate. Does that by itself mean that it's important enough to take up?
Well, it's our responsibility to either approve it or not. And the Deer Committee has done a heck of a lot of work over the last, you know, three or four months. So, you know, David, while I totally understand and agree with you that in the grand scheme of things, in terms of what's, what we need to be doing in town, that's not at, on the top ten list. Um, but I think, given how far down the road we have gone, uh, and how much we've already heard about it, I, I think it does not need to be, um, it could be a, basically, a review of the, uh, proposal and a vote up or down. Uh, you know, and yes, there may be some people that want to come and, and say something for community input, and that, they certainly be welcome as always, but, uh, I think, I, my own opinion, but I feel strongly that we ought to, uh, accept the responsibility we have to say yes or no. And now I will say, um, and I, I think this is also another really important component, that the Deer Committee, um, would really like to see the Board of Selectmen, um, approve, um, putting a warrant article on the town meeting for the spring of 2021. And, uh, while the Board of Selectmen absolutely have the authority to, um, you know, approve or not a bow hunt, given the emotions and the history so far, to let the town take a vote, um, next spring on whether or not they support bow hunting on town-owned land, and then, uh, have it be a warrant article that's developed by a, a group that represents all sides, and you come up with a question that, you know, everybody is, agrees to, and then that gets presented at a town meeting and voted on.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think, if nothing else, out of courtesy to the Deer Committee and all the work that's gone in, and the people who oppose it as well, we, we should either, I mean, we can, we can vote not to, not to run it, which is essentially what would happen if we didn't do anything. Uh, and, or, uh, vote to have it. And I think that's, it can be done in relatively short order. We, we, we have a complete proposal from the Deer Committee. I think it's finalized, isn't it, Barney?
Yes.
Uh, everybody read that and come in prepared to make a decision. We, while we can have, we can have public input during the comment period, that we won't, we don't have to do that, have public discussion during the meeting, other than during public input. That can be limited to the board, and, uh, we can make a decision. It doesn't have to take up a lot of time. But I think we do owe it to the Deer Committee and to the public who have asked us to do this, to make some kind of a decision.
Do we actually have that? Has it been sent?
Yes, the proposal?
Yeah.
Well, Tim.
There was, there was a preliminary proposal, and then that's, they modified it.
Yeah, we, we actually, the Deer Committee thought it was gonna be on the agenda tonight, so I think, but, Tim, you got materials, didn't you, on Friday?
Yes, yes, yeah, I can have that.
But I don't think that's been sent out, Luke, to all of us.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I just, I wasn't sure.
But it's here, and so it could be sent, you know, tomorrow, so we have it in plenty of time to look it over.
All right.
Okay. Alan, do we have a hand raised in the audience? I think it's Janie Genesco.
Oh, okay, uh, Janie, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I need to say something, um, at the, this is a concern I had that I sent to the Board of Selectmen and to the, um, uh, to Tim. And that is that the, on the agenda for the last Deer Committee meeting, the item four was to, uh, uh, review the, the revised plan and to vote on it. At the Deer Committee meeting, there was no revised plan that was available for anyone to work on. Instead, what happened is there was a general discussion where people had different ideas on what could or could not occur. And, uh, for this, uh, for this, uh, proposal to go out. And, um, it really, it did not get voted on. Uh, what happened is halfway through the discussion, the Chair of the meeting said, well, I guess I should be writing this up. And, uh, everyone kind of agreed, and then they continued the discussion. And the discussion ended with a direction by the Chair, uh, there was no vote taken. It was a minimal effort, uh, by the Deer Committee. Uh, and, uh, what happened then is the Chair of the Committee, contrary to open meeting law, said that he would be, uh, writing this up. And then what he would do is he would send it out to the members of the Board of, uh, excuse me, of the Deer Committee. And basically, what happens then is that the Deer Committee would go and respond back to him alone. It is basically a type of serial communication, and this is what the Deer Committee has done before. And they're presenting it, if Barney is correct, it is not something that the public actually saw the document out there. They did not see a vote, because there was no vote. And it's being something that is presented as, this is our proposal to you. I don't think that this is a legitimate thing to do. And to come up with it and say, we can invite some people, that there are people who are very strongly opposed to it, and yes, there are people are very pro for it. But the right, uh, uh, open meeting procedures were not followed, and the Deer Committee has done this in the past. And so I would ask that, that you receive a final that was done in open meeting law requirements and voted on by the Deer Committee, and then given to the Board of Selectmen, because you should really be looking at a, um, a, a, a document that did follow those, that did follow those, uh, rules. So, uh, that is, uh, very much what I think, uh, should be honored, is, uh, the open meeting law being done properly.
Thank you, Janie.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, let's get my screen back here, all right? Uh. Any comment, Barney?
Um. Well, I, I, I don't, um, agree on the. Well, I, I don't agree on the question about, you know, sort of not following open meeting laws. But we certainly can, if the deer committee, now that we've been appointed again, is planning to meet before the, what is it, the twenty?
Twenty-eighth.
The next meeting, the twenty-eighth. Yeah. So if, I can certainly talk to Jonathan about having a formal vote on the documents that you have, that Tim has in advance of when they go to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Well, and I, and I'd like, I'd like us to get them at least a week before that meeting too. So we have a chance to review them.
Yep.
Okay. So if you can get him to schedule that meeting with, with appropriate notice to the public, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
How is that practical if you're going to be away?
Well, I'll just, you know, I have to vote. I mean, I'll call in and the deer committee meeting can happen, you know, it'll happen virtually. So
I know, but I thought you're off the grid. You have a way.
Yeah, yeah. If I need to, I'll, I'll call in.
So I, yeah, I, I want to wait. I mean, I think, you know, open meeting law is a very complicated subject and I appreciate Janie's inputs. We ought to clean it up and make sure that the rules are well understood, you know.
Absolutely.
But in terms, I want to get back to the point I made. I, I'm okay with what Chairman Lewis said, but I want to caution everybody, you know, I sat, I've observed these meetings, you know, as an, as a non-Porter select person at the time, but they get very divisive and very long. And we got a lot of stuff to do in August. So I urge, if we're going to take it up, okay, fine. I realize that, you know, it's kind of an open unchecked box. But let's really be disciplined about limiting debate. Every point has been made many times. And whatever, you know, points raised, let's make sure they're understood. And I agree, then let's vote and let's move on. Because honestly, it is hurting the town, not the deer hunting, but the fact that it sucks the oxygen out of much more important things.
Yeah.
To me is like not worth it.
Yep. The other thing I want to, which sort of comes in the liaison reports, but it does make sense to have it on one of our upcoming agendas. And that is the master plan. And I just want to suggest that maybe that first meeting in August on the eleventh, you know, our regular BOS meeting, that that be an agenda item so that the Jan Corneal, the Chair of the Master Plan Steering Committee can bring to the board where we are on the plan and what we're recommending as we go forward. You know, as you're all aware, the consulting firm Civic Moxie sent in their resignation on Friday. And we can talk about that later when I do the liaison report, if there's any need to. But I definitely like to have the master plan discussed by the board, you know, after a presentation discussed by the board sometime in early August, if we can do that.
We can put that on the August eleventh.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Agenda. Okay. And I'll contact Jan to be sure she's got something to report.
I think it's the August fourth, right? Oh, no, August.
No, August fourth is planning.
Yeah.
My mistake.
Anything else, Tim?
Actually, yeah, one item not, not in the written report. Over the weekend, we got a request from Madeline Blake, the Chair of the Planning Board for a letter of support for the MVP Sustainability Grant. You'll recall, there was a presentation a number of months ago and the board was very supportive at that time of filing a grant application. They drafted an application, I think Lisa Davis-Lewis was involved in that with the planning board. It didn't get to us in time to go in the packet, but they intend to submit it this week. So time is somewhat of the essence. If we did want to have a letter from the Chair of the Board supporting that grant application, I suppose you'd have to agree to do it tonight. But that, again, that's up to the board. I know, I know Kate was copying on emails.
Yeah.
She was Chair at the time, but now it's Alan.
The, that's the proposal, you know, to, for funding to look at climate mitigation, the effects of climate change on Carlisle and, and where, where are the areas that we may need further funding to help address the, you know, like issues like flooding on a particular street or I've forgotten what some of the other examples are, but a number of things have come up. Maybe Kate, you know more about this. But I'm just for background or David's information anyway.
Is there actual grant that has been written?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yes, grant proposal. And so this is, I would move that we, the board submit a letter of support with this grant application.
And I can, I can certainly sign that. And I can do that tomorrow, Tim?
Yes, I'll, I'll send you both the application and a, a letter if you agree to sign it.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think we ever turn down money, do we?
No. Historically, we don't. No.
Okay. Very good. All right. Anything further?
That's all I got.
Okay. Liaison reports. Anybody?
I got nothing.
Okay.
We need to talk about, I, I've sent you the letters about Civic Moxie, their letter of resignation and then our, the National Plan Steering Committee's response. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has on it. But just to reassure the board that the Master Plan Steering Committee is, you know, prepared to move forward. And the, what's happening now is this week, Jan Corneal and Madeline Blake and myself were kind of acting, you know, as the kind of lead team are developing some options and looking at the work that needs to be done where we think we might still need some professional help. There's about ninety, there's $99,000 left in the hundred and sixty that town meeting approved. So we, we still have some funds that we can definitely use if we need to hire a consultant for a specific area. We do not expect to, you know, go out and go through a process of trying to find another planning firm. So, and then the, I, the plan would be to come up with some options that we would present to the Master Plan Steering Committee, which is meeting next week. And, and then have a, have a work plan and a schedule ready to discuss at that early August meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Has Civic Moxie already provided their report for what, for the work that they've done so far?
We, well, we have, we have some of the deliverables that, that were due. The write-up on existing conditions in town is, is pretty much done. There's a little bit of work they still need to do. But they also have agreed in their letter of resignation, they agreed to provide us with the, the final map revisions that they're doing. And they're going to provide us with their recommendations, at least to date, of, of what they think the key sort of changes ought to be that we consider in the master plan. So they have committed to finishing all the work that was due through phase two of the contract. The contract had four phases. And so they have told us that they will have that to us no later than the middle of August.
Okay.
And our timetable generally is, you know, going to be significantly later than the original contract, you know, for primarily because of COVID and the, and the significant delay and also the ability to do the next phases of the community outreach. But I think we're still looking at a January or February plan being finished and submitted.
Okay. Thank you.
Should, should we have the planning board come to the, that, you know, should we invite them to the, to the Board of Selectmen meeting as well? Because I mean, they're the ones that proposed this, right?
Yeah, they're, yeah, it falls under them. Yeah, Madeline Blake, I'm sure would be happy to come. But we could also invite other members of the board if you chose.
For the eleventh, you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think so.
Yep.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? If not, okay, our next meeting will be August fourth at eighteen hundred hours.
July twenty-eighth.
Oh, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. July twenty-eighth. You're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rats.
I, I'd almost, sorry, I almost forgotten. We, the septic for the DPW has been approved and we'll try to put shovel in the ground for that ASAP because we, we're currently in a rented trailer. We'd like to get rid of that, stop paying rent on that and get a new trailer that would then be hooked up to real plumbing for the employees. And so I wanted, that is one, one good news. And the other good news is that for, you know, about a hundred dollars in parts, we've finally got the library up and running with fresh air. And we charged the freon for eighteen hundred dollars and we saved the town eighty-five thousand dollars for, instead of putting a new chiller in there for another year. So they'll have higher energy costs because the thing is actually working now. But they will have some fresh air in that. So I wanted to mention that.
We're going to have all these solar cells now.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Luke, just briefly, how are things going on the Complete Streets project? Of course, you can see that they're underway in the center of town.
Yeah, you can, you can see the progress. So actually, we're, we're awaiting an update. Yeah, Tim, I don't know if they've reached out to you. They're supposed to reach out to us kind of on a bi-weekly basis, you know, when anything major is going to, is going to go on. And, and yeah, they haven't reached out to Lee. Lee is really the, Lee Stores is really the guy spearheading this. I mean, he's the expert in Carlisle on it. So, so it's been great. But I think he was away last week. So maybe that's why they haven't reached out. But Tim, I don't know, is there anything?
The contractor ally, they're getting back to us this week with the pricing for the, remember the, the two conduits that we talked about adding to the project to bring electricity to the circle? And then one from the library across to the Adams Beasley project who are waiting for some pricing for extending utilities, for doing the conduit to eventually extend the utilities to those parts of the project. But no, it seems to be going pretty well so far. Minimal disruption to the flow of traffic.
Yeah, it was unfortunate the timing of their, for their legal problems to be kind of hit the, that was a little awkward.
Yeah.
And very unfortunate, but.
Yeah, but it's interesting. You can already kind of get a feel if you follow the lines.
Yeah.
How you, how you'll turn in and out. Yeah, it, it's going to be different. But yeah, it should definitely slow folks down.
Yeah.
Going to be tough on the bicyclist.
Yeah, well, you know.
Yeah.
But that was part of it. That's why Complete Streets didn't want to give us, you know, the full amount because, you know, there isn't the bike piece to it. You know, they're, they're really, you know, pedestrian bicycle and, and vehicle. And because we couldn't, you know, Carlisle Street, because we couldn't provide that. Yeah, it was a big, it was a negative. So.
Yeah. Okay. All righty, it's a little after nine. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll move. All right, everybody.
Is everybody moving? I think that's probably a unanimous adjournment. All righty, see everybody.
Congratulations, Alan. Congratulations, Alan.
Oh, thank you, Barney.
I'm the one that's supposed to be congratulated. It's all out of my lap now.
Exactly.
I was going to say that next. Yeah, Kate, have a nice glass of wine and put your feet up.
And condolences to Tim. Now he has to work with me. All righty, good night, everybody.